I'll tell you right now, they might say no because Banda is done. She's been the, she's been the president for ten. Okay. Good evening, everybody. It is now six oh three P M. And I'd like to call the regular historic resources board meeting of Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty five to order. If you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Board member Brett Knoll, will you please lead us?
Join me in the pledge of allegiance to our country. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Roll call, please clerk.
Board member Brett Knoll.
Present.
Board member DeBreez.
Here, present.
Board member Marterana. Board member Sanchez.
Present and accounted for.
Chair Posano.
Present. So, moving right along, this is the time for general public comments on items that are not on the agenda or under the city's subject matter jurisdiction. The board will not be engaging. If you have anything that requires follow up, staff will get back to you. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per speaker. And the chair may further limit the time for public comments depending on the agenda's schedule. If you're attending in person and wish to make a public comment, please fill out a speaker card and state your name for the record. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comments. Do we have anything?
Madam Chair, no speaker cards received and seeing no hands raised on Zoom.
Great. Hey, are there any members in, no, no Zoom and no public, right? Okay, alright, so moving consent. There are two items on the consent agenda. Will any board member wish to pull any item for separate vote? Does any member of the public wish to pull an item for a separate vote or discussion?
No member of the public rushing to the podium and seeing no hands raised on Zoom, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we have A, B, and C. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second? Is there a second?
My second.
Alright, state with a motion, with a motion from board member. Eddie. And a second from board member Elise Brett Knoll. We will have a roll call vote.
Board member Brett Knoll. Board member DeBreez.
Aye.
Board member Sanchez.
Aye.
And Chair Posano.
Aye.
Motion carried.
We have one action item tonight, and this is the request for the installation of a commemorative bench in the public right away. So, report, Ms. Colick, City Manager.
Good evening, Chair, board members. Tonight you have before you a request that was submitted by the Spirit of San Juan Batista for approval of a commemorative bench honoring Mr. Richard Ponce, a longtime resident and community advocate. The proposed bench be located along Third Street adjacent to Anacofusion Restaurant to the north. And has been reviewed for conformance with the city's historic preservation and design review guidelines. Staff found the design to be consistent with the historic character of the downtown core. And are presenting this item for your review and recommendation to the planning commission for their consideration. I believe we have city engineer Sanguinetti, if you have any questions, as well as Julianne Murphy from Rencon. Thank you.
Did you say Julianne Murphy from Rencon?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Um, sorry, yes. City manager, Colick, can you show us what the bench would actually look like? There we go.
Yes, it's in your packet tonight, but we also put up some slides too for the benefit of the public. And we don't have the exact rendering, but there is a description and a drawing. That's up on the screen here. Going to be made out of redwood and metal.
Can I, can I add a question to your question?
Of course.
Actually, in Rencon, I noticed in the staff report, there's a recommendation for a design change. For a quote, simpler, finial design circular or spear rather than the more ornate shell option is, do we have any depictions of the proposed better design?
That's a great question, and I'm not sure where that recommendation, if it's not already in your packet.
If I could.
The text is, but I don't see anything visually to show me what a finial circular or spear design looks like.
Good evening. I can interject here if that's helpful.
It is. That's why I was asking. That's why I was asking, Ashley, what your name was.
Yeah.
Forgot.
Um, yeah, so on the report that I prepared on page two of that, there are finial choices laid out. Um, that depict three design options. So the top one is kind of the most ornate option. And then there are two simpler ones.
Okay.
These very light.
You said, you said page two?
Page two of the report prepared by Rencon. I'm not sure what page it is in your packet.
And it's figure or final choices?
Yeah, yeah, figure one, the finial choice is on the corner there. So the bench designer has presented three options and the recommendation. In order to be in conformance with the standards would be to choose either the second or third option on that list rather than the shell option that's depicted in the rendering, just for it to be a simpler design is the recommendation in our report.
Yeah, I get it. And where do these go on the bench anyway?
Um, so if you see, if you see the rendering next to that, yeah, it's kind of on the attack, where the, where the bench arms are attached to the back of the bench.
On the back, okay. Yeah, as the chair indicated, our cop, our copy is really faint. Our copy's really faint, so it's hard to see. So it, it, it just holds those brackets to the back of the bench.
Right.
Got it. So we need to choose one of the, um, one of those tonight, and your recommendation is the spear looking one or the circle one?
Yes, one of the simpler ones.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I have another question.
Go ahead.
I personally like the shell. Are we violating some rule that we have to go simpler? What's wrong with the shell?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, so based on the, there's two secretary standards that are, that apply here, standard nine and standard ten. And standard nine advises that new additions shouldn't destroy historic materials, and they also should be differentiated from the old and be compatible with historic materials. And I think the use of that shell design, it, it appears to be trying to mimic an older type of style. And so I, I think it's trying to evoke a period that is later than the one we're currently in. So I think in order to avoid confusion from what's historic and what's new, the simpler option is more aligned with the direction of the standards.
And is that the city's thought as well? City manager?
Thank you. I'm going to defer to the commission on this one. Um, and I, recognizing Julianne's memo and her recommendation is based on the Secretary of Interior's design guidelines. But I think it's worth a discussion and a decision from the board.
Um, are there any other board members who have questions regarding the design or the bench? Board member Sanchez?
I mean, questions, no, it's pretty simple. There's two different spots where these are going to go on, right? Looking at, at the design, it's three and a half feet wide. My only thing would be having a, a pointy object would probably not be, even though, yes, I know minimal, right? But we got to take everyone into consideration. Having a pointy object probably would not be the best, just for safety reasons. I like Commissioner Brett Knoll, do like the clamshell design, but I mean, yeah. Error in the sight of caution, so having something pointy is probably not good.
Okay, thank you. Board member DeBreez, question?
I know. I feel like I'm sitting at the adults' table at Thanksgiving. Made a phone book. Shell versus triangle versus circle. I think I'm agnostic on a choice. But the, the chair asked me a good question, and that was whether this benches matches the others that are already existing on Third Street. And I know the artisan who made the existing benches, Keith Wright, he actually made this thing too. Way back in the day. And I don't know if your question was, why don't we just do a commemorative bench to match the others? Is that where you're going?
Um, well, it was actually to tag on to board member Brett Knoll's question about the historic design. And my question, I'll ask City Manager as well as Rencon, is are there any other benches that you're basing this off of? Because I haven't seen any benches that look like this in town. And then with regards to board member DeBreez's comment, the other benches in town on Third Street are, are wooden and were made by Keith, correct? And those don't have the arm. It's a, it's a very nice bench, solid, simple. And so I'm just wondering, where did this design come from that you're calling it historic?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Second. So the design, since, since this is the Spirit of San Juan's request, they, they are responsible for the design. It's not supposed to be considered historic.
Oh, I see.
It's a commemorative bench that's supposed to honor Mr. Ponce.
Okay.
So, no, it does not look like the other benches, the other city approved benches in, in town. Um, so it is unique in that way. And then I'll, I'll let Julianne correct me if I'm wrong, but I think a part of what she was saying is that anything that's new has to be distinct from what, from the character of what's already on the, in the downtown.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's two, there's two criteria that we were looking at for evaluating the quality of the design proposed by Spirit of San Juan Batista, and that are the San Juan Design Guidelines and the Secretary of Interior Standards. And the San Juan Design Guidelines only have one mention of benches and they're only, the only guidance provided in that document is that benches should be made of wood or other natural materials and should be located where they do not interfere with pedestrian movement. And so we evaluated the design against that standard, and then the Secretary of Interior Standards, of which there are ten, only two apply to this project, nine and ten. Nine is that new additions shouldn't interfere with historic or materials and should be differentiated from the historic. And then ten is that new additions should be undertaken in such a manner that they could be removed in the future. So those were the three things that were evaluated as part of this project. And our recommendation was that it generally follows the San Juan Batista guidelines as the, the main material is wood. Um, and it doesn't appear that it will interfere with pedestrian movement. And then it aligns with the Secretary of Interior Standards in that it is it won't interfere with any historic buildings that comprise the district, and it can easily be removed in the future if so desired.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I think it's a beautiful bench, and bottom line, I think we should approve it as is. San Juan is a very unique city unto itself. Everyone that lives here is very unique, and considering we're the Spirit of San Juan is asking us to put this in in remembrance of someone who obviously they feel is very special. I think we should approve it as is and move on.
Okay, before we do so, need to know if there's any public comment, if the board members are finished with their questions.
Well, I mean, there was a bench before this, right? I mean, I, I remember seeing one there before, yeah.
Okay.
A few months ago, and there's going to be one after it, so.
Okay.
The bench.
Right. Uh, is, is there a public comment?
Yes, I have one speaker card. Bob Quaid.
Bob Quaid, one six Lang Street. And I'm actually on the board of the Spirit of San Juan Batista, so here to answer any questions you may have about the bench. And maybe give a little bit of background. I don't know if you all know Richard Ponce. But Richard was real active in the community. He was on the city council for a period of time. He was involved in Boy Scouts. He was, he started Spirit of San Juan, but when it was called the San Juan Committee. He was on the founding board of it.
Prominent figure.
Yeah, prominent figure. And actually, Michael Ponce's father. Up and coming prominent figure. So when Richard passed away, I think it was back in two thousand two thousand sixteen, memorial donations were made to the Spirit or San Juan Committee at that time. And so we asked the Ponce family what they would like us to do to memorialize Richard. And they requested us to put in a bench. And so that's where we came up with the bench. The bench is designed and going to be built by Joe Claus. This just lives down the street here. Joe actually built the little dis- display for the historic walks. And Joe has said that he will maintain the bench, putting a coat of
Barney.
Linseed oil or whatever he's going to put on it. So as far as, if you guys want to make any changes to it, we could talk to Joe about that. And it's going to be basically a slab, a, a redwood slab, one solid piece for the seat, one solid piece for the back. So we don't have to worry too much about it splitting. Which, as far as the other benches in town, the Rotary put those benches in, and I actually helped Keith build those benches. So those, we can't really duplicate those because Keith's not really in the business anymore, and those.
I was wondering.
The, the wood, wood from that was from an old water tank that Larry Kane had on his property. And we salvaged that wood and planed it down and cut it and built those benches. So, and there is metal, and if you don't, probably don't know something, but there is metal in those benches. It's, the metal is holding the back up, and then the legs are on metal too, but the legs are.
I meant the arms, yeah.
There's no arms on them.
That, that's what I'm saying. There were, there are no arms, but it's a beautiful bench.
Yeah. So, and so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have about the bench.
Okay, so at this point, is there anybody on Zoom? Okay.
I do have one question.
So, one more question?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I apologize. Um, where, what are you going to put on it to commemorate the gentleman?
Apply, a little.
We just probably get a plaque, similar to what the Rotary benches have, but it being more rich, but we also plan on, I don't know if you, Richard, Richard had a brand.
Oh, cool.
So we, we plan on branding the bench too.
Perfect.
So, and what was, I'm thinking what the saying was. What was it? Yeah, so we're, we might put a little, Richard had a lot of sayings. The one I loved the most, and it's not, if I could put this one, at one time, because Richard made a lot of antiques. And so he'd find old wooden stuff and make antiques, and then he had some bob wire, and he made hearts out of the bob wire. And he was telling me, oh, yeah, they didn't sell them all, so I put a little sign on it, love hurts.
Oh.
So he's very creative in some of his sayings and his, his ability to build things in, he was in the antique business, and so he sold a lot of antiques.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, are there any board member comments? Have, have you got a public comment? Okay, go ahead.
Sneaking, uh, Michael Ponce, eight oh three First Street. Uh, just had a question on the standard nine and ten that Rencon was talking about, about the shell design. Uh, from what I understand, with the, the woman stated that uh, standard nine and ten says that you don't want to mimic an older style. In other words, what I understand is you're trying to copy something. I don't understand what the shell is trying to copy. I haven't seen those shells in San Juan. Uh, I do kind of like that design, but that's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other public comment via Zoom or otherwise? No? Okay, board member comments, last one. Brett Knoll? Comments? DeBreez?
I just want to revisit the shell issue. No, I'm just kidding. It's a joke, Ponce. You like the shell? Okay, no, I'm, I'm agnostic on that, that choice. So, I'm not finished.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Um, so I did have a question, Bob. Um, are the iron arms, are those going to be made forged locally, or how, what are you doing for those? He can, he can forge metal like that as well? Can he, Ponce? Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's his design. He's going to manufacture it completely.
Otherwise, you guys know Danny Vermiller at the Last Forge. He's
Oh, yeah.
Pretty awesome at that stuff. Has done a lot of things in town. They do? Oh, there you go. So I bet, I bet Joe might have Danny forge those in his, in his forge, so that'd be great. Because then they'll be hammered and kind of really rustic and really fit the town. Just, just not barbed, just not barbed wire like your dad.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, thanks, you good. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Uh, board member Sanchez?
No.
Okay, so do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the bench as presented shell and all.
Second, anybody?
I second it.
Okay, so. Motion to approve by board member Brett Knoll and seconded by board member Sanchez. Roll call vote?
Uh, board member Brett Knoll?
Aye.
Board member DeBreez?
Yes.
Board member Sanchez?
Yes.
And Chair Posano?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Informational items tonight, uh, we're going to start with update on the registry for historical homes. City manager, Colick, would you please?
Yes. Thank you for asking for information on those items. As the board is aware, we are in the process of hiring for planning staff. So this has kind of been placed on a brief hold. Happy to report out during my comments tonight what the status is.
Okay. That was it, right? Okay, any board member questions? Let's start with board member Sanchez regarding the update on the registry for historical homes.
No, just looking forward to it.
Board member DeBreez? Okay, board member Brett Knoll?
No.
Okay. Only question I have, Ms. Colick, is do we at least have a number on how many homes there are on the registry?
I do not.
No, okay.
But I will ensure that we report out next month for you.
Okay, thank you. So, another on that is the letter, question on the letters. I know that when, prior to Islay, Isla- before she left, Ilse, before she left, she drafted a letter. What's the update on that one for the historic homes?
So, this same, it's been drafted, and I think you guys have a copy of it. So, we'll, 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 yeah, we'll revisit that next month.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on the registry for historical homes in San Juan Batista?
No speaker cards received, Madam Mayor, and seeing no hands raised on Zoom.
Then let's go with board member comments. I'll begin with board member Brett Knoll.
Okay.
Okay, DeBreez?
Nothing.
And Sanchez. Okay, so this is a non-action item, so we're going to go ahead and rely on the updates at the next meeting, which would be in November?
I believe November fourth, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to update on grants for historical homes. Report from City Manager, Colick.
So, I must admit, I need more information on grants for historical homes. Is this something that Commissioner Brett Knoll was working on?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, with, without.
Thank you. So I do have a spreadsheet, if anybody would like one here. Uh, it lists all of the potential grants that the city of San Juan Batista would be eligible for. Um, in short, uh, there are a couple that are due October fifteenth. That's not enough time for us to get them in. But I think we should start planning for next year with the issue with the lack of funding for our federal government. We could not gain access to the information that we needed to give you a proper update. So I'm hoping in November, uh, we will be able to provide you with more details. With that being said, I am extremely busy at work and don't have a lot of time, so I would like to ask the board's permission to figure out a way to maybe ask other committees within the city or the city itself if they'd like to help put this together so that we can move forward with this and potentially hopefully get some grants to help improve the, some of the buildings within town. Thank you.
Okay, board member questions for Ms. Brett Knoll? Okay, I think the only question I would have is if we are going to ask other committees, are you also open to having public participate?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The more the merrier. I mean, if we can't have a huge group because then we'll never get a decision, but you know, five, seven, nine people, that'd be fantastic.
Yeah, um, I think there are some very knowledgeable people about the history and, you know, grant writing. So I think we need to make note that we are open to public participation. Okay, so if there are no other board, well, one minute, are there any public comments regarding grants for San Juan Batista? So um if there are no other board, well, one minute, are there any public comments regarding grants for San Juan Baptista?
Uh no speaker cards received and seeing no uh hands raised on Zoom, Madam Mayor, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you. So uh board member comments on the, the grants? Any? No? Okay, so again, a non-action item, so we're going to go ahead and move on to um almost closed historic resources board member comments, let's start with board member Sanchez.
Great job, everyone.
Thank you, board member Debriz?
Great job, everyone.
Thank you so much, board member Retinal?
Say great job, everyone.
I'd just like to thank the city for all of their hard work and specifically our city manager Colic uh for all the hard work that she is doing. Um I know that that she's been doing a tremendous amount in the background and I'd just like to say thank you.
Okay.
Good to it is. Me too, I want to say thank you to Ashley too.
All right, neither that, okay, well, thank you all. Um I, I do want to make one comment and that is to invite everyone public as, as well as the board members. This Saturday, October eleventh, from eleven AM to two PM is the annual open house for the um San Juan Baptista Historical Society. Um they're inviting all to come and to bring everyone, kids, everybody, because we can learn from um the materials that they have there and the information. So um I just saw this quote and I just want to mention it, it says, use the past as a library. Uh learning about the history to build a better future and we are very lucky to have San Juan Baptista Historical Society because they actually highlight the preservation of our community's identity and that's why it's really important, I feel, um to, to look and see how much we can get from the grants that will bring that even more to light with not just our town, but with all the other um surrounding areas. Um and I specifically tonight also want to thank Vanda Wibera. Uh she has been the president of the Historical Society for ten years. And um she's done an amazing job. Um I don't know if you all read the Mission Village Voice, but every issue she does have uh the section of history that she highlights um here in San Juan Baptista. So she's done a really good job. We need to maintain and um really support the efforts by the Historical Society. And um similar to board member Retinal, I do want to thank everyone here in the city, the staff, manager, as well as this board for the work in uh maintaining San Juan Baptista as a historic site. So, with that said, city manager comments, please.
Uh thank you, um on behalf of the staff here in the city, I, I will um gladly accept your praise because we have people who work extremely hard here and um it's, it's, I, I'm the face of them, but they are incredible people who are very, very passionate about the city. And I meet with them every other week and they have questions and they are engaged um on, on the issues. And so, on behalf of them, thank you very much for your kind comments. Um I do want to um make some announcements. Um we have, as you know, we, Elsay moved on. Um she got a fabulous job with CSU MB, so congratulations to her. That left a little bit of a hole in our staffing. Um we have been working really, really hard behind the scenes to recruit. Um and I am happy to report that on October twenty-seventh, we will have a planning manager and associate planner and a permit technician uh starting, which means we will have a fully staffed uh community development department. Um so that's really, really exciting for us and so make sure you guys come by City Hall and say hi and introduce yourselves. Um so that by the time we have our November fourth meeting, we should have plenty to report and lots to update. Um and we'll make some grand introductions, so that's, that's my report um for you.
Board member Retinal?
Aye.
Board member Debriz? Board member Sanchez and Chair Pesano?
Aye, and it is six thirty-six PM, this meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Eddie, you want to lead us in the flag of allegiance?
Me?
No, Eddie.
Eddie, Eddie.
Absolutely, it's right now. March, flag of allegiance. Let's get the allegiance.
You gotta call it first, guys. You gotta call the meeting to order. You did?
Yeah. I said we're ready to go. Call the order and nothing like flag of allegiance. All right, one, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, please, Liz?
Commissioner Retinal?
Present.
Commissioner Marterana? Commissioner Pesano?
Here.
Commissioner Sanchez?
President and accounted for.
And Chair Debriz?
President. Welcome everyone to the Planning Commission meeting for October. Um it's what, Liz? October seventh, yeah. Well, for, October seventh being a four October. Uh each month we set aside time to hear from the public on items that are not otherwise going to be discussed on the agenda. Is there anything, Bob, Heidi, none, is there anything um in Zoom land, Liz?
Uh no, uh no, chair.
Okay, public comments closed. Going next to the consent agenda, has everyone had a chance to review the affidavit of posting in the minutes from August five? Any requests to pull anything? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the uh consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. All in favor? No, watch Liz. Look at her, she gets all mad. Go ahead.
Uh Commissioner Retinal?
Aye.
Commissioner Pesano?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Aye.
Chair Debriz?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving on then to our bench, I am assuming, yes. Is there a need to have any additional discussion other than what we just did? Everyone has a staff report, you know, the questions about the back supports, you know, bells versus circle, that's all. Everything is still true from three minutes ago, that was true then. So if there, is there a need for any further discussion by the commit, by the commission? Eddie?
So the shells.
I'm good. Okay, well, if there's no need for further discussion or uh input from staff, is there anyone from the public that would care to comment further? Thing, nothing, oh, here comes Kara, let's wait for a minute. Kara, you're just in time, do you have anything to say about this bench? The bench? You do not? Okay, is it, uh public comments closed unless there's anything on Zoom, any hands raised?
No hands raised on Zoom, chair.
Okay, public comment for this bench item is closed. Returning then to the commission, unless there's a need for further deliberation, we can entertain a motion. Move to approve?
I second.
Do you want to um specify with uh the shell thing like we did for HRV?
Yes.
What, guess what?
May I amend? I, I would like to-
That's a good procedural order. You're the maker of, you know, that's true, you're the maker of the motion. So for her to offer an amendment, she has to ask the maker of the motion whether you will accept a friendly amendment. Just a little Roberts rules training there, okay?
I love good old shell conversation, so please.
I would like to amend your motion to state that uh we would like to approve the bench as presented by the spirit of San Juan Baptista.
And the amendments is approved by the maker?
Approved.
Okay, so the motion as amended, we have a, a motion.
On the amendment and then?
Now you don't, I said as amended.
Right.
Cause, yeah, I think you're wrong, I know. So we have a motion as amended and did you, did your amendment also carry with it a second?
Yes.
Okay, so you got that, Liz? Okay, um then a vote?
Uh Comis-, Commissioner Retinal?
Aye.
Commissioner Pesano?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Aye.
Chair Debriz?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Great, next thing, future agenda items, is that you, Ashley? Do you have anything on that?
Check my notes.
Chair, that item, um it's been used differently, but what it's supposed to be is if any um commissioners um want to add future agenda items, that's what, this is the opportunity to request those at this time. So this is what it's supposed to be, but it turned to something else that.
Okay, but that'll be a running thing?
Yes, yes, but this is the intent to, this is the opportunity for the commissioners to ask and place items on the agenda.
That's wonderful. Um keeping in mind that we have a new, um what'd you, what'd you call her, planning manager and assistant planner or those?
Assistant planner, planning manager and associate planner.
We have a new planning manager and associate planner starting next month. Um do, with that in mind, do we have any future agenda items or do we want to wait until them when, once they get here? If, I mean, if you have anything left on your mind, just say it now, that's what this space is held for. Anything you'd like to talk about in the future, Eddie?
Well, not so much, um other than just providing the opportunity to, for these new individuals to get their feet wet, understand the culture here, understand what's going on here, understand the work that we've done. And just be a resource. Um once, you know, once they get their feet in, which I'm sure um the city's going to do, um just collaborate.
Yeah.
That's it, just be an open source for the, you know, group and team development.
Yeah, that's good, that's great. Add anything you'd like to see on future agendas?
Um just more information from the work, I, I know I had asked this prior uh with regards to where we were in twenty twenty-four and some of the open items that we had begun and we were to receive updates on them, um and hopefully some closure. Um with the interruptions of the different schedules and um rescheduling meetings. I, I don't think that we ever came to an end on that one because there were, as far as planning commission goes, there were things that we were trying to address, whether that's permits and what um we need. Um and then also with signs, lighting. There, there were many items that the last time that we did receive somewhat of an update was when Elsay was here and she had the um PowerPoint presentation and the chart. I, I would just like to remind everyone or bring that back up to where we can focus because it is the end of twenty twenty-five and, and I'd hate to, again, close the year without having closed what, what happened in twenty twenty-four. Just an update, information.
Like that, like that, Liz, anything, any ideas?
I mean, I'm super excited that we have uh new staff coming on board and it's wonderful, I do understand and agree with uh Commissioner Pesano about wanting closure on twenty twenty-four so that we can move forward uh with the last meeting here of the year and then moving into twenty twenty-six and really make a dent on the work that needs to be done here, which we all know is here. We've just, you know, got to give our city manager colleague here a chance to put her team together and start moving forward for us and I'm sure they'll have more than enough work for us um with a full staff. So um just give them a chance and I look forward to hitting it hard in twenty twenty-six.
Hit it hard in twenty twenty-six. Okay. I don't think I have any, anything further, I, I printed out that list, that one time we talked about this and we'll bring that up once Ariel and Victor get on board. Okay, and moving on, six, planning commissioner comments? Any general comments, at least?
No comment.
Eddie?
You know, I, I do have one.
Yeah?
And it's more of a question than a comment.
Sure.
But, you know, this is my first go around here and I'm wondering how the federal government shutdown affects our city, our town, our county. Um and I, I, I'm sure I'm, I'm not the only one that has this question. Is, but I guess my question comment is, how can we, as a city, as a community, um rally around the shortcomings that are happening within our nation? How can we prepare ourselves that, hey, we're not going to, you know, whatever's happening upstream is happening upstream, but how can we protect what we have here? And not let it affect any of the federal funding that we have, if we have any, I don't know. That's just my question, comment, concern, keeps me up at night.
Does it really?
Yes.
Oh, well, good news, we don't have a lot of, Ashley, I'm sure would wish for that, we have more federal dollars in general, but there's not a whole lot of federal money flowing in here, the post office.
Well, that's a fantastic question. Um and I will tell you that the city um does an excellent job of shepherding the public dollar and budgeting. And we are very aware of, and we're following extremely closely what's happening at the federal level. And as you know, we just uh, just uh passed our bonds with the USDA for our fourth main project. Um and so that's federal dollar. Um and so we are watching it very closely, very carefully, um but we, we are. So we're taking it day by day and I'm getting updates all the time, so if you want to email me in the middle of the night, please do and I'll get back to you in the morning.
Is there any threat to that USDA bond?
No, not so far.
Knock on wood.
Knock on wood, we're okay.
Go light a candle at the mission, I always say. Good question, Eddie. Um I don't have any planning, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, anything from you?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Um and I apologize, I wrote it down because I don't want to forget anything and I don't want to miss. But um before we wrap up tonight, I just want to take a moment again to say thank you to my fellow commissioners, I truly appreciate the time, energy and commitment you have given thus far to the city of San Juan Baptista, uh historic resources board, as well as the planning commission and to our city staff. Again, thank you for all you do behind the scenes and keeping us informed and operating within guidelines. Um this is a, a personal statement comment from me and just wanted to say that when I joined these boards, I did so with the hope of being instrumental and um making some uh difference in, in the city because I really love San Juan Baptista. But after almost two years, I've seen good, but I've also seen some challenges. And um I came into the role asking for accountability- I came into the role asking for accountability, transparency, efficiency and effectiveness. And I've been frustrated many times about how hard that's been. And um most recently, something happened at one of the meetings, council meetings, not ours, but a the city council meeting that reminded me of who I am and what I stand for. And I didn't then, and I still don't feel that I want to be part of a system that limits open dialogue and makes it difficult to speak freely for what's right. So um tonight, I am stepping down as chair of the Historic Resources Board and as a planning commissioner effective immediately. And I'm leaving with gratitude, not bitterness for the experience and with a hope that I can still be instrumental, but just as a private citizen rather than as a commissioner or a chair of the Historic Resources Board. So um if anyone out there in the public and here uh in chambers, um I just want you to know that I am available to still speak and uh work with people regarding results that you may want to see. Uh but I think for me, um I am just grateful and I thank all of you. So uh this is it. Bye.
Wow. Well, um individual commissioners can respond as they would like, but I'll say that we'll be sorry to hear you. We're sorry to see you go. I'm sorry to hear that. And you will be missed. Uh I didn't see that coming, but um trust in your your direction and where you think you need to go and how and why and all those things and just wish you all the best with everything you've got coming up in the future. Yeah, thank you for your time and service. I know you were passionate about HRB and planning things um in general, so thank you, Ida, very much.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to second that and just say honestly, thank you for being a great mentor. Thank you for um your commitment and devotion to sitting country. Um and I just hope that we, that means I get to see Reggie walking around a whole lot more.
Commissioner Pisanu. That news saddens me because part of this experience isn't always agreeing. We haven't always agreed. But I still love you to death. I think you're a fantastic person and will miss you greatly here. And I hope that over the next few minutes, you will reconsider your decision to uh resign and decide to stay because it isn't about the battle, it's about the war. And you can lose a battle but still win the war. And you are part of the solution here, not part of the problem. And by leaving, you leave us weaker for that solution. So if you are in fact dead set on leaving, thank you very much. I wish you much luck and prosperity and happiness. And because you're my neighbor, I'll see you all the time. But um you know, thank you very much and I just wish you would reconsider. Thank you.
Did she change her mind? Little bit, little bit. You're thinking about it.
You know, um I thank you very much for all the positive comments. And uh I think from what Dan said is that I really truly believe that I would be more instrumental, you know, if I was just me. And um I don't mean to leave you in a weak position. I'm hoping that someone will come in and be stronger uh you know, than my leaving. And because this is a, this is a great, I feel, a great um commission and and board. And um I've really, really enjoyed all of you. And I think that, you know, Jose Aranda, former planning commissioner, used to say, we got it. And I want to say, Jose, if you're listening, we got it. Over the last year. So anyway, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
I think that's no good try though. That was compelling. I thought you turned your head. I bet you turned your head a little bit. Okay, I think that's it for the planning commissioner comments. Um if I'm not mistaken, as ma- madam city manager, anything to-
Uh Commissioner Pisanu, thank you for your service. And you will be missed by me and the staff. And I'm going to say that publicly. I I think we mistake uh disagreement for being in in as as uh unwelcomed, but it is not in public service. Um it is welcomed. And you need disagreement in order to properly collaborate. So just keep that in mind. I can't push you and make you stay. But I but I I want you to understand um that from my perspective as a city manager. Collaboration in different voices is important in decision making. And by working together, you come up with the best solution. And you, it doesn't mean that you make everybody happy with that solution. Most of the time, there's always going to be someone that is unhappy with your decision. But here in government, it is the people's voice. And so I'm going to miss your voice as the people here on the, at the board level. But thank you so much for your service. We we need more of that. Um and that is what excites people in public service, right? If everybody said the same thing, it would be boring and I wouldn't be here.
I appreciate that. And and I know that you had made that known to me. So yes, oh, I'll be collaborating.
Okay, good.
I will have a voice.
You have my phone number. You know, you know where to find me.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I know it's a personal decision on your part, but why don't you table your decision until Friday? Nothing's going to change between now and Friday anyway.
What's Friday?
I don't know, the end of the week.
Or or maybe uh till Saturday, the party, the open house?
Okay, whatever, but why not? Why don't you table it for a minute because no one wants you to go?
Thank you. I will consider.
Will you?
Uh consider till Friday.
Okay, there we go.
Okay.
We consider until Friday.
Okay, and then I made other comments and we talked about the staffing. The so those those are my comments. I don't have any any more news, except I did take note for your future agenda items. And I have a list a mile long for the new planning staff. See that long list?
There was a hand motion that, there was even a hand gesture that went along with long list.
Chair DeBreez, I do have a question.
Choreography, yes.
When you have a moment. Um so I am making the assumption, which I hate to do, that Commissioner Pisanu will still be stepping down.
No, what do you, what, don't be so negative, Nellie. No.
All right.
Hey, permission revoked.
Okay.
Permission revoked. Only positive energy.
Okay, should the worst case scenario happen?
It's not going to happen. She's going to reconsider.
How do we go about um is the commission the one, can we assign or ask someone to join us? Or do we have to vote? Or is it the city council that does that for us?
This is the council decision.
Recruiting process. Liz, Liz and Ashley handled that. And then, and but we can get word out. But ultimately, it's chosen by the council.
Okay, and then we have to wait until the new commissioner is on board before we get a new chair?
Before what? Oh, for the HRB?
We do.
Yeah.
I know that.
Yeah, we do have a um a um a vice chair.
Yes.
So it would go to the vice chair.
It's not going to happen. She's going to reconsider.
Thank you. You answered my questions.
Negative, Nellie. Should not have said, I should not have granted you permission. Permission revoked. She's going to reconsider. Yeah, you blew him. Okay, um that was city manager comments. So if there's nothing else, we can-
I'm sorry, one more thing. Benito Link, if you're watching this, don't crop out my mullet this time. Crop out the mullet. It's glorious. I worked hard on it. Thank you.
Photoshopping your mullet?
Yes.
Yeah. We can't even get the microphone somewhere. Our technology is expanding. Mullet photo shops. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oh.
She will.
You know me. Um Commissioner Brett Noll.
Aye.
Commissioner Pisanu.
Aye.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Aye.
Chair DeBreez.
Seven o'clock.